We do not have. In our area. Community Health Corps, I attended their just past week, this past week, their new crisis center, where they expanded the beds at Atlanta. I feel it's a need that's important to share with y'all. It's about a dozen beds they added for more long-term stay. Like the individual who we had to taze, use less lethal force on. She got delivered to the hospital. And then she received a longer-term stay at a Dallas facility. Giving how combative she was under normal. And that comes back on us. So normally, in a situation where they are violent, we're having to handcuff them, get them in the car, usually they're in marshal, drive them to Dallas, turn around and drive back. That takes an officer off the street and a good distance away. This, in Atlanta, opens a door where they're not transported to Dallas, they're more likely transported to Atlanta. And an individual suffering a crisis, already experiencing a lot, or not wanting to go to Dallas. They don't want to go to a big city where they're even more confused. So bringing them to an East Texas close town, more than likely they've been to Atlanta, if they reside here and lived here all their life. There's, and families able to get them and bring them back, as well as follow-up appointments for treatment. So I think that's a plus and a win for Community Health Corps, which is our local mental health authority. Because of the high crime and everything going on that I've mentioned in the past and what we're going to go over again. January 28th, I went to Bear Bank and presented to the staff there a security presentation. What to do in the event of something happening at the bank, improper procedures to follow, but at the same time, follow your own bank's procedures. But things that we, as we show up to a scene, what are going to be expected and asked. Because in a chaotic situation, members of staff need to know what the procedure will be and be more familiar with it, and as well as mind scripting scenarios. February 11th, I did a fraud awareness presentation to the residents at Cypress Place Living, which is some of our most vulnerable citizens in our town. Now, they're, they're experiencing credit card, debit card abuse, things like that. So it's very important to get out there and say, hey, don't trust this person on the phone, especially with AI and voiceover technology where they're able to clone your grandchild's voice, things like that, make you confused. April 26th, we had the DEA drug take-back at Brookshires. I put that in here. We do have the prescription collection box that's in our lobby during normal lobby hours. Normally, if we just had that standalone, we would be responsible financially for the destruction of all the prescription medication in the box. Teaming up with the DEA on their national, two times a year take-back, we packaged it all up together, drive over to Tyler, where we get rid of it. I want to say we got rid of close to 50 pounds with the collection from the lobby and the collection from the DEA take-back. On April 28th, the Jefferson had a high school career fair, which the police department did participate in, and a, hey, please think about a career in law enforcement. I did push them to, the Army recruiters were there. I was like, hey, go over there first, do your four years, come see us when you're done. You know, there's some good benefits there. Notable events, page seven. March 17th, as most of y'all are aware, the ATM at East Texas Professional Credit Union was burglarized. It is an active investigation, but we do believe that the suspects are not local. If you simply Google search "week ago", and East Texas, I mean, it's sadly a common practice, unfortunately. I do know East Texas Professional Credit Union put in a new style ATM with added security. Phone scams are high. Again, people impersonating local police to solicit personal identification information, or just get you to go get some Visa gift cards from the dollar store and give them the numbers off the back. Please do not do that. The staff at the Dollar General, the staff at the Family Dollar are both aware when something like that comes, if it takes cops being the bad guys in that case and saying, hey, this is what's really happening to you, we'll be the bad guys in that case. Increase in minor crimes. We have seen, again, thefts, disturbances increase, and I think that's because of the influx of the workforce coming to town. That's just going to happen when you have a growing population like that. Increased copper theft, like I said, 10 incidents in the last month, most of them involving AT&amp;T lines. The current issues of the police department. So we do have one vacancy since January. We still with our current staff. And Cynthia Simmons is not a full-time officer. She comes in just on Fridays, but has been assisting with fill-ins. With our five officers, we still manage a 24/7 police department. There's still someone on duty, and sometimes we're lucky enough to have an overlay. 24/7, just to put that in perspective, when you're asleep at home, just realize there's, there's an officer outside driving around the town. We have posted. And indeed, online, little interest so far. A lot of people who are. Seeking or asking for the, the path to licensing. So I'm, of course, encouraging that, offering that, planting those seeds for down the road in the future. Vehicle maintenance, of course, y'all saw the engine hour or the engine mileage on those vehicles. I do not have the engine. Frequently this year. We have, went out for competitive rates, expanding down to marshal. They have more businesses there. We are looking for what we can get for quality service for the money. At the same time, we have two shops in town. They are already overwhelmed with the population of Marion County. So we're having to expand out, who can service us and put this. What's not in here is, in the future, grants. We have at cog, you know, they're offering, usually at the beginning of the year. Melissa and I had the privilege of setting in on the workshops for those grants. We were both overwhelmed with day-to-day at that time. When reviewing that, we're thinking, there's no way we're going to be able to implement this, do this in, in two weeks as required right now. So we are, I am, not going to speak for Melissa, but I am going to make forth an effort that. Next January, it's when it opens up and we get pay rate. I believe it is August, September, we get a reimbursement. It is a percentage match, usually on grants, especially with vehicles. And vehicles is what I'm more concerned about. The cops grant, they just released that deadline and proposal, which is a no-match grant for accreditation. I spoke of this, spoke of this about six months ago, where we are moving towards accreditation, probably request some money for that. And I will be speaking with Melissa, I discovered this yesterday evening. Any questions about this report?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
You've got your licensed officers here.
Yes.
And then you have the other thing. Do you still have John Lawrence and Carson McKnight? Are they?
Yes.
They're, they're part of your police?
Yes.
How many people does the Marion County Jail hold that are city people? That are city?
That are in there?
Yeah.
I don't know the body count right now.
But you do have some?
I, we do.
That's a question.
We do have inmates there. One of them currently pending trial is Dylan Rogers, arrested for murder. So that's going to be coming up actually pretty soon. I do know that one.
I was just curious about that. Anybody else?
Tino, you mentioned about your, your opening, and there's been very little interest in it. Can you give us some idea of what it's going to take to get?
I will say, everyone has an open, and I think I brought this up again a year ago. Moving in a direction of hiring citizens, getting them licensed with a commitment for a contract, commitment for three, four years, and putting them on the street. That they're, they have, the larger cities can immediately afford to do that. It's going to take us adjusting to try to even fit that in, if that's a possibility. But that is the direction that a lot of people are going in. There's just a mass exodus of police officers saying, I can do something better with my time. I love what I do, I'm not leaving. I love what I do.
Also, your, what was it, the cadet program you had?
Yes.
Is it still going?
It is, it is, it is still going. We have one senior leaving, so we're going to have, we're going to go to one, one student. But going to the career fair much necessary. Going, things like that, even though they're not even age-eligible to become a police officer yet. It does start with planting seeds of, hey, you, you want to do this, or you want to be a part of this kind of thing. It's very fulfilling, it's the best show on earth.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
At this time, I'm going to skip out and apologize to Will Smith and Lisa for not calling y'all up sooner. Sorry that y'all sat through all this, I wasn't thinking. So let's skip down to the action items. And on A, we have to discuss, consider, and/or act upon and ordnance authorizing the insurance of the City of Jefferson combination tax and surplus revenue certificates of obligation series to Winnie 25, and the principal amount of $605,000, to fund the water system improvement and awarding. Of obligation to the Texas Water Development Board and revolving other matters. Heading to the subject.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Will Smith. I'm with Specialized Public Finance. We serve as the city's financial advisor. And I've put a presentation in front of you that I'm going to be going over. And this presentation really covers items A and B. And then there is also a tangential item, item C, that is related to these bonds. So if you flip over to the first page, this is just an overview of where we've come so far. Last week, the 13th, the Texas Water Development Board set final rates for this loan through the RWAF program, the Rural Water Assistance Fund. This project qualifies for, it's really in two pieces, and that's why you have two items on your agenda for this. One of them is the loan amount, which is item A, and that's $605,000. That's 10% of the project costs. And then principal forgiveness in the amount of $5.435 million. That's 90% of the total project costs. The final interest rate that was set by the, the development board was 3.23, and that's on a 30-year term. And that is callable in 10 years. And we'll talk about this interest rate here in a little bit when we get to one of the last slides in my presentation, and how that compares to like an open-market debt. And just as a point of comparison, when we were here in March, we estimated that the interest rate was going to be 3.6%. So over that time, we were able to save about 37 basis points, which is significant. Tonight, you're considering authorizing the loan and the principal forgiveness, and that's items A and B, both to the Texas Water Development Board. And if you so choose to approve those, closing will be scheduled for June 24th. Your first payment will be due in February of 2026. The next page is just annual debt service and pro forma based on the interest rates that were set last week. You've seen this before, this was in our pre for that interest rate of 3.23%. Next page is sources and uses. And also, we have a funding history here, some bond attorney costs. Our firm is right at $110,000. That's an estimate right now, it'll probably come in a little bit lower than that. And then, so the deposit to your construction fund is $5.9 million. And I want to point out that since 2016, the City of Jefferson has received through Texas Water Development Board funding $11.3 million for your water system. Of that, if you choose to approve it tonight, almost half of that is going to be a grant that goes with this 2025B. And I, that's, that's really impressive that you guys have done that. It says two things. One, you're taking care of your finances, because you're getting your audits done and you're doing those things, and you're doing the due diligence to get these applications in. So I think that's important for everybody to know. The next page is just a financing timeline. The final executed documents will be due to the Texas Water Development Board on June 13th, and Bond Counsel will handle most of those. And then June 24th is closing, and the funds will be available. The next page is just a historical municipal interest rates. And I wanted to point out that at the kind of top right corner, current interest rates with the Bond Buyer Index, similar type debt is about 5.24%. So you can see that's almost 200 basis points lower. It's more than 200 basis points lower is what you're, what you're going to be paying for this, the $605,000. So it's really good, it's a really good rate. So on the last page, Specialized Public Finance, we recommend that you award both the loan forgiveness portion and the loan amount to the Texas Water Development Board. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
One question I have.
Yes, sir.
So we'll get a check basically with, what, $5.9 million?
Yes, sir. Well, really, you'll get a check. It, it'll all be done in wires. It'll all happen on the same day. The sources will go out from, really, a paying age. The cost of issuance will go to the appropriate people, Bond Counsel, Texas Water Development Board, all our firm. And then that $5.9 million will go to your construction fund. There's actually item C on your agenda tonight to approve. Good question.
Anybody else got any questions?
Make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Cammy, Bubba made a motion to approve. Ray second. Any discussion? The only thing is, I'd like to see in 30 years, that $600,000 just going to cost us $900,000. That's kind of scary. Okay, all approve?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It was unanimous. On B, discuss, consider, and/or act upon a resolution approving the execu- execution, I can't say it, and delivery of a grant agreement for water system improvements and resolving other matters relating to the subject.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion to approve. Ray, motion. Who second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous. C, discuss, consider, and/or act upon a resolution authorizing and directing establishment of construction account with depository bank pursuant to a grant agreement, appointing authorized signatories with respect to such accounts and resolving other matters related to the subject.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ray made the motion. Hollis second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That was it, they're all. Okay, now we'll go back and take up where we should be. Thank you, Will. Lisa, you're here for what, tell me what number we'll get you to. C?
D.
Let's do D. Lisa has to go back to Tyler. Discuss, consider, and/or approve agreement between the City of Jefferson and Schaumburg and Polk Incorporated for engineering services relating to the Texas Water Development, RWAF Drinking Water System Improvements for the amount of $1,250,000. Any questions? Or do we have a motion?
I have a question. So that, to engineer this whole water system, five or six million dollars worth of stuff, y'all are charging $1.2 million?
Yes, sir. That's 21, right at 21%.
Yes, sir, that's correct. This, this is a very large project. The project is going, going to include the replacement of up to 25,000 feet of water lines and the replacement of every water meter in the system. And our current count is over 1,300 meters. So that's a very large project. It's going to result in at least 100-plus pages in the construction plans. It's going to take hundreds and hundreds of hours to produce those plans.
Do we have a motion?
I got a motion to approve. I'll second.
Bubba made the motion. Ray seconded. Any other questions? Anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous? Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, let's. Consent. Our consent agenda. And/or approve April 15th, 2025. Meeting minutes. April 29th, 2025. C, consider and/or approve. Meeting minutes? I didn't realize we were that at it. D, consider and/or approve April monthly financial reports. E, consider and/or approve quarterly financial reports. F, consider and/or approve a resolution for official action to authorize individuals to sign checks on behalf of the City of Jefferson. G, consider and/or approve a resolution amending authorization representatives for Texas Pool. H, consider and/or approve the 2025 Senior Class Parade Event Application Deck with waiving the requirements for the certificate of insurance. And I, consider and/or approve the Wolfstock Festival Run-Walk Event Application for November the 7th and 8th of 2025.
Motion to approve.
Hollis had a motion to approve.
Second.
April 2nd.
Yes, not saying it would be no, but I wanted to give them the same opportunity. We're blamed for a lot, we do do a lot, but we did not do this. And I wanted to give them the opportunity, you know, to come forward.
I was just curious.
So that's what happened, that's why it was so late, because, and I got sent the message, what was said. And so we were totally to blame for something we actually didn't do this time, so. So that's, that's why.
Refreshing.
That's why it just got turned in. And we do have a couple seniors back there. And I want to take the time to say, I know we didn't clap a second ago, but to have some high school seniors and an eighth grader to come up here to talk to us, I want to say I am very, very, very proud of you guys. So I know it gets scary sometimes, but Cooper, you did a great job. And to see those kids back there, you know, it's good, so. That's why it's just now being put on the applica-, on the agenda.
Gotcha.
Good deal. Any other questions? The only thing I have, and you guys probably have looked at this on your financial statement, but I wanted to just point out for people listening in. We had the leak in front of Dick Seltzer House, and at the same time, we had a leak over by the barbecue house. And if you'll look, Kyle Lawler had to come out to fix them. And it was $35,000 to fix two leaks. So that's something we need to think about. Now, any other?
We need to vote on this?
Yes. Yeah. Any other questions, though, or anything? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And it passed unanimously. Okay, we're down to. E. Discuss, consider, and/or approve rejecting the Texas Water Development Board, TWDB, funding for $2,020,409 in financial assistance consisting of $990,000 in financing and $1,030,409 in principal forgiveness for the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Lead and Service Line Replacement Program, LSLR.
Mayor, Mr. You don't need the senior parade people anymore, right?
No, they're good to go.
So we're, the, the motion or the item here is saying that we're going to reject that.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So move.
Second.
Hollis beat me.
Bubba made the motion. Hollis seconded. Any questions? And for those of y'all just getting here, this was because it was going, it was 49, 51% matching. And this, we don't, the water line, the lead lines that need to be replaced, we've got probably 10 years or more to do it, so. Something better has, will probably come along. Anybody else got anything to say? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? We got them all in finally. F, consider, discuss, consider, and/or approve the agreement between the City of Jefferson and Trailer and Associates Incorporated for administrative professional services in connection with the Lift Station Generators Hazard mitigation grant project contract DR 4485-0204.
Are these the people that are doing the generators?
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Ray made the motion to approve.
Second.
April 2nd. Yeah, this are the, yeah, we've been doing this for a while. The generators for the lift stations. Anybody else got anything? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous. G, discuss, consider, and/or approve the first annual Freedom Walk Health Fair and fundraising fundraiser plan event application to be held on July 21st, 2025. And that'll be in your?
June 21st.
June.
June.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
April made the motion. Paul seconded. Any discussion?
Well, it is June and not July, or did it?
It is.
It's June.
I just read it wrong.
Okay, all right, well, I didn't know whether it was.
I was praying that it is wrong. Okay, so any, anybody else got anything to say? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? We have one. Doug abstained.
Patient in front of us. I didn't, has water and sewer been approved for this one?
They're not wanting any.
Oh, okay, they don't need it.
Because it's at their house and it's, yeah.
You're right.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
It's okay. Good question. Anybody else? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? It was unanimous. J, discuss, consider, and/or approve opening River Oaks Drive on the rear side of Barbara Anderson's property located at 1106. Oh.
Ginger?
Oh, yeah. Just stay right there, I'll get you. Discuss, consider, and/or approve Ginger Mortison's application for building permit at 402 East Delta, single-family house.
Motion to approve.
Hollis and April made a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Doug seconds it. Any questions?
Ms. Mayor, on the, one of the planning and zoning said that they wanted some dimensional drawings, and I think she has them now, so.
Good deal, yeah.
I just wanted to mention about that house. Thank you.
I thought that was in the. Something like that. Yeah, I think we've got the.
We've got it, actually, yeah.
What happened, what happened to April?
Barbara Anderson, I've owned part of this parcel of land since 2003, the rest of the parcel since 2012. The mailing address. The mailing address is 1106 North Walcott, but the parcel I'm talking about is the one in the back. I am coming here tonight to request the opening of River Oaks Drive as it terminates directly into my property. You can look at the surveys I've provided, and it obviously shows that. The opening of River Oak Drive is essential to allow a construction of a driveway into my property, like the driveway of my neighbors. It will, the proposed driveway will be constructed by a reputable company. It will fully adhere or exceed all the guidelines and standards set by the City of Jefferson. Additionally, I want to emphasize that the city will not incur any cost with the driveway construction. The driveway will be straight and direct into my property. This will be a private use driveway with a gate and a lock. There will be absolutely no through traffic from 59, as some people were concerned, and that's a good concern. There is absolutely not even any direct line of sight. If you'll look at the picture I provided, you can see my house blocks 59. There's not even a line of sight to the driveway, proposed driveway. I have done almost $20,000 worth of massive cleanup this year, including an abandoned house, downed trees that were burned and towed away, all of that. Now, this driveway will allow for continual cleanup of the property, especially the River Oaks Edition Lot 5, Block 4, and you'll see it on the survey also. It has woefully overgrown and needs a lot of care. Once it's cleaned up, it will make a beautiful house block. It is part of the River Oaks Edition, so it's part of that subdivision, division. We were also starting on Memorial Weekend. We will have professional grass cutters doing the grass. The driveway will not be the primary driveway for the property, but it will be private, like I said, with a gate and a lock. It will be my safety exit out the back. Should there be a catastrophic problem on 59 or a traffic problem, I will have a safe way to get off of it, off the highway. It has been brought to my attention that there is a city light pole, which I was not aware of, that is six inches within my existing fence. Kami and I are going to get that resolved and get the fence moved. I didn't know that. I want to thank you for your time and your consideration, and I want to know if there is any questions or anything that issues I can address.
I've been, I've spoke with you. I've spoken to the other neighbor there that lives nearby. One of the things I've, I was going to question is, is there an up-to-date survey on property lines?
Yes. The survey you have is dated the time I bought the property, 20, um.
In a while, Randy.
2012.
Okay.
2012. And that's when I bought the piece that we're discussing tonight.
Okay.
The 2003 was a part of that parcel, and then 2012, I bought the other parcel.
Okay, we need a motion. Let me, I, I have a question. You're saying you want to open up, will the street go on the, is there a street on your property already mapped out?
That's really a question for the public works guy. I'm, I'm not really sure, but here's what I understand. I understand the street comes up, and then there are beautiful plantings which are on city property. You can probably tell this better than me, and then it butts directly into my land.
Okay, so basically, the street's not going to be extended any. You're just wanting the, you just want the fence down?
No, I don't know anything about this fence. I'm just wanting a driveway.
No, you're saying, though, that there's a fence, fence across there at the end.
Oh, that's a chain link fence because the, the light pole is six inches within the fence. Is that what we're, and the obstructions are out of the way?
Right.
And how fast that can get me on the schedule, how much money it's going to cost? I don't really know.
Right.
But it's, it's like already in the work.
But are you talking dirt, gravel, pavement? What kind of driveway?
Concrete. Or cement? Whatever the city requires, but the man, or the two companies I've been talking to were very well respected by the city.
I don't.
Mayor, can I answer your, answer your question another way? I think you asked, no, that's not an extension of a city street. Of all the plot maps we could find today and yesterday, that, that neighborhood ended. That's a dead-end street. And, and then, then there's private property there behind it. So it wouldn't be an extension of the street. It would be access to the end of that street.
Right, absolutely.
It wasn't part of the original subdivision.
That's your.
It's not part of the original subdivision.
Right, it's not.
Just that one lot with the double gate and the chain link fence.
My question to council and mayor is, how are our ordinances right now as, as far as being able to follow up with this with the other landowner? How, I've, I've been told, and I don't know, y'all may know because I'm new, that our ordinances are not up-to-date to be able to enforce this.
The removal of the fence?
The removal of the property, the fence and stuff. That's one of my questions. And it's, and I would say we table this until we find this out.
I agree with the table myself.
You need to make a motion.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to table this until we find out more information on our ordinances and where we stand on this. I know we're working on some at this time, at this point. And it may take to get to that point to be able to enforce it.
Right. Okay, so Paul made the motion to table this at this time.
I'll second.
April seconds. Anybody else got anything to say? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous.
May I have a question? May I ask a question?
Sure.
Madam Mayor, what information or what data can I bring to you to help you with this decision?
Not anything, because it's got to do with the city's ordinances, and our administrator will have to look and see. And we're redoing a bunch of them at this time, so it might be that they just need to pick that one out and see if there's anything.
You've got access there. It's unlikely to have access.
I do right now. But when that becomes clean and it's available for a residential build, then I won't.
Well, the only thing I think about was, you've had it for 13 years, and you didn't want a gate out there then. I mean, I turned around down there, and there wasn't no gate there then.
I understand that, and now is the process of, I'm trying to improve this property and improve my neighborhood and improve the City of Jefferson.
But, you know, you have access to it now, is what, and, I mean, if you sold a lot, you know, and there's actually somebody going to build something on it, we might need to re-look at that. But, I mean, you do have about 500 feet of, of access off of Highway 59 that is more than most people have, you know? So you've got plenty of access. It's only about 150 feet deep. So, I mean, you know, but we would have to know with ordinances what's, what's what. But there's lots of, let me say this, there is a lot of property or building going on in city streets around Jefferson.
Yeah, right.
Now, I mean, there's no question of that.
And I, and I.
So that's not unusual, what she's got there.
Right, right. It just keeps me from putting a driveway like all my neighbors have.
Well, you've got, can go out the front with it, can't you? Out to 59?
The whole thing with having a driveway in the back is in case of a, a chemical spill or a hazard.
Well, everybody would have that same. I don't have that ability. They couldn't even get out of the whole neighborhood if you had something like that.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Anyway, okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Now, will you contact me again, or how does this work?
Yeah, when Melissa gets back, we'll get those ordinances looked at and see what we need to do, and you'll be contacted.
And in the meantime, I'll see if I can sell that lot. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
Okay. K, is discuss, consider, and are approve waiving the utility discounts for May 2025 due to software conversion delay in mailing out utility bills.
Motion.
Motion. Triple motion. We have six motions to approve.
Second.
Oh, like Doug's going to second it.
I've already got some calls about that.
I think Ray, he was the most excited. Okay, I think that there's no discussion.
I did.
And Ray seconded?
Yes.
No, Doug seconded. Yes, he saved his, yes. Okay.
I'm going to let them fight over the motions.
There's nobody left for a second. Everybody, everybody jumped on this like a duck on a chum.
Take mine off of, of, of make the motion to approve, put me in on the second.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Needless to say, it carried unanimously. Discuss, consider, and are approve raising the price of cemetery plots to $750.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ray made the motion, Bubba seconded. Discussion?
Yeah. I have a discussion. Was there, was there any discussion to the city from all the work they've been doing on, on this research on everything as to the jump, the extreme jump from 275 to 7? I knew there needs to be an increase, but why that, that much?
That much is because we haven't raised rates in, well, since dirt.
I thought they were at 500.
No, they've, it's been, it's a, it's been a giveaway. A lot of cemeteries in the area charge it upwards to $1,000 a plot. I mean, it's what? May I ask, Kerry's here, and he kind of knows a little bit more of the story about what's going on with that kind of thing, if it's all right, Mayor?
Yeah. Stand up, give us your expertise.
Go up to the mic.
Of course, I think everybody had a great much settled. My name's Jerry Easter. I'm in the grave digging business, and I parry the graves in the cemetery. But to maybe help you understand the situation, when I arrived here 40 years ago in August, we was charging 275. There's like two people buried in there. So the rest of them's in there, I've helped put in there. Short of that, I traveled cemeteries all over East Texas. I dig graves all the way to Marshall, Louisiana line, back far as Dangerfield. Most of them, 600 minimum. And that's something probably is not desirable, that you'd want to even have your family in. I mean, that's some of the lower end. So 750 is not out of range. Now, I agree with you, that's a big jump all at one time. But we've been that long, that, that amount for so long, it should have been way back in when I was the mayor, 100 years ago, we should have gone up then, but we didn't. And it's kind of like, way back in when I was the mayor 100 years ago, we should have gone up then, but we didn't. And it's kind of like other things, it's nobody's fault, I don't think. We've tried to, you know, maintain it, but now it's to the part that the maintenance is getting to be a problem, the roads are deplorable. There's a lot of work needs to be done out there. We do have some money, because the city's done well taking care of their funds. I mean, I, you know, we have some money available, but in the future, we won't have if we can keep selling them for $275 a space. And what'll happen sooner or later, and as you like right now, Kellyville that the county owns, Kellyville's not burying anyone else in Kellyville Cemetery unless you have somebody already buried there or a family member. Used to, we used Kellyville as a place, not being ugly, but paupers was taken there. I've taken lots of them there in 40 years. They won't let us do that any longer. And it's for the simple reason, it just, they fill up, and they're about to get full. As these other rural cemeteries get full, that's going to force them to run to town and purchase something. We're sitting there selling them for $275. Well, that's a pretty, pretty big incentive, let's go to town. And so therefore, we have to protect our own property that we have and still be able to recoup enough funds to take care of it and make it look nice in the future. But, and I agree, that's a big jump. I'll be the one.
Um, if a, if a city brings a pauper, not proper.
What do you mean?
Yeah.
City doesn't, it falls on the county.
Do we sell, or do they, it's free when they come in? So regardless of what we change the price, that keep people from coming?
If it's a pauper situation now in Marion County, which Marion County is responsible for them, Marion County has chosen to have them cremated. So we don't bury them any longer. We cremate all paupers.
So it doesn't matter what we charge, we, we're going to get those that way?
Sir?
Regardless of what we charge, we will get them cremated and not in plots, correct?
Yes, correct. But that falls back on the county. The county pays the local funeral home. They have a contract with them to take care of all the pauper services. And believe it or not, there's probably more than what you think. I mean, I'm there every day. I mean, I know.
Enlighten me, what is a pauper?
Somebody, nobody claims or don't have the money. They, I mean, they just don't have.
So if $5,000 a lot, it's going to be a lot more of them showing up.
But I mean, that's way far to the extremes. I've never heard anybody charge that much. That's what he told me out of his own mouth, they were charging. I like fell off the backhoe when he told me that's what he said. But what I'm saying is, if you check around Colonial Gardens, Algoma, any cemetery like that, Marshall, Yates, Yates is 1,200. Yates is not cemetery, it's Scottville. Anyone's, it's a veteran cemetery, but anyone's willing, anyone can go there. I, I have a service there come fight, they charge $1,200. Algoma knows there's 3,000, depending on where it is, 1,500, 3,000, depending on the location.
I don't know how people afford to die.
Where my sister lives in Colleyville, $63,000 for a plot.
Are you serious?
That's where the rich folks live. That's, that's the other side of the family.
Now, while we got you up there, I want to, I want to take advantage. While we got him up there, I want to take advantage. Is there any discussion on the fund that we have in using that for improving the roads into that section?
We've talked about, and I think that's on a discussion item tonight, maybe. I know there is some money available in the fund. What I'm hoping maybe the council might talk about is, instead of waiting to the, a paving project, this is kind of a separate situation. You know, it's not taxpayers' money, it's something that the cemetery's collecting.
I've been talking to Melissa about that. It's not on the agenda tonight, but I have been talking.
There's someone in discussion.
Oh, it is.
Yes. What I would like to say or encourage, if you're going to go to 750 or even 500, you're going to have to show something, the reason you're that much money. Bubba said he went after Dane, he said he didn't go there. He was out there all the time. We've had a couple there in the last week. The main streets got holes in it this deep.
Right.
That cars have to now, you know, get through.
Right.
To go up the main drive. It's, and, and I'll give the mayor, she, when she come on board, the fence roads were horrible.
Yep.
And she took care of that, and we got that fixed. And I appreciate it, because it looks a whole lot better, and I know the public appreciates.
I'm on the Old Oakwood board. I get called all the time about complaints for Oakwood Memorial and the shape the streets and stuff are in.
They think it's all in one.
Yeah.
They don't understand.
The fencing too, you even made, you even talked about that.
What if any plots are for sale in the old cemetery, what do they go for?
If they're for sale.
Lee owns them. Tums. City Hall tells. They call and say, I've got this many plots for. About a year ago, there were five out of one family. And so notified a couple of people that had said, you know, if anything comes up, well, those were snatched up.
Yeah.
There are some out there, but it's just up to the individual family member that's selling as to what they want to charge. I think the last one I heard out there was a lot of complaints from people that have had to go to Oakwood Memorial.
Yeah.
Because of the situation that it's in.
They're forced to go there, y'all. They have nowhere else.
They don't have any choice.
Exactly.
And I know when Ms. Cox, Barbara Cox's son passed away, that lives out there where the city administrator lives.
Yeah.
Melissa, they're out there, her son passed away unexpectedly, and they had to go to Oakwood Memorial. And she was, I mean, she just couldn't believe it. And I promised her faithfully that I'd work on it to see that we got something fixed. So, I mean, my neck's kind of on the line for us to get this fixed. But, but like Sharon's saying, anything that's in Old Oakwood for sale, I can get it sold for you tomorrow for $5,000.
Oh, yeah.
I can get them gone. I know enough people that's looking for them.
Right, they constantly, so.
Now, in my understanding, on these lots, you can't resell these, right?
For what the shape it's in right now, 750's too much.
Pardon me?
I said, from my opinion, I've been on the cemetery board almost ten years, the shape that Oakwood Memorial's in, seven fifty's too much. That's just my opinion.
My only opinion, and I agree with Sharon, but if we're agreeing that we're going to use some of the money that we have, and we have enough money in the account to make it nice. I think there's some, my understanding, excessive hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
If we take just a small portion of that money, fix a few monuments, fix the streets, tear down some old trees, I, I mean, at that rate, then you can promote it at seven feet and no one should have a problem.
Right, but it, it needs, it needs banking.
Anything else for me?
Any, no, thanks.
Thank you.
You told us it was your fault, they weren't raised previously, so.
Somebody has to take the blame. We always point blame right here.
The possible date of the change, would that be today's date, or are you talking about, what's the, the date that this would go into effect?
Well. I'll let the mayor make the call on that.
Yeah.
Would be, I would think it'd be the day we voted to do it.
To do it, yeah, immediately, okay.
And if you have anybody pending right now, maybe grandfather those in, if, if there's anything already in motion.
I didn't know if you, you said it a month down the road, if we had a blue light special going or something.
I love selling, it's expensive. I don't think we want to sell out yet.
Can I say one other thing?
Sure.
Another thing I think we need to work on, and I'm sure not to point the finger at the city council, but, and the new guys might not understand, in addition to the two seventy-five, we'll charge two hundred dollars for a monument. If they put up a monument, it used to be six months, they got their two hundred dollars back, which when COVID came along, they couldn't hardly get that done. Now they can get it done easily, up in six months. I think we need to do a little bit better job of, I can show you at least two out there that didn't see several years. No markers, no nothing, little temporary marker, about four pieces, we're going to lose the graves other than our maps. I think we need to find out some way to have a better tracking system. If they don't purchase the monument, we can work it through some monument company, get a contract with them, provide a solid piece of backing for two hundred, about two hundred dollars and get them a partner.
All right.
If they don't buy it, we need to.
I, I was surprised that you can't put military.
It's part of it, yeah, it's part of the. It's, it's part of the covenant, which all plot purchasers sign.
I know, but I mean, to me that's.
Thing is, is, well, you want to do the, for the discussion, you want to move, or do you want to go ahead, shall we just discuss it now?
No, I don't care.
I don't, I mean, it doesn't bother me, but.
Yeah, let's just, we'll do discussion, let's, let's.
Well, yeah, I mean, since we're, since we've stepped into it, let's go ahead.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm just pointing a personal opinion that I was.
No, I agree, it's, it is, it's, it is, it's a sad thing, but the way the cemetery was set up, it would just be the headstones and nothing else. That makes it easier to maintain the grass, you know, when they weed eat and they grass now. Unfortunately, it hasn't been enforced, and so we've got footstones, we've got things that, what do they call them, that hang?
Shepherd hooks.
Shepherd hooks, we've got all manner. We had a bench out there for a while, but Melissa got them to remove it. But that interferes, they can't mow now, they have, you know, they can't get in between the, the grave sites to mow. So that a lot of it now has to be done with a weed eater, and that takes a lot of time. And that was the whole point of the, of the restrictions on the covenants that the purchasers of the lot were required to sign. And so we've got to face the bugaboo of enforcement, you know, well, how do, how are we going to handle this? Um, do we send out letters? And if, if such, who do we send the letters to?
Not the people out there.
Not, yeah, not the people out there, yeah, uh, but, you know, giving a state of grace, you know, a period of grace to get to bring things up. The, on the veterans, the only thing that I could come up with would be to move the stone right up in front of the monument itself. Makes it, you know, just, instead of barring the mowers from a large stretch, it just precludes them from getting closer to a monument. I mean, they're going to be weeding, weed eating around them. That was.
I think what he said a while ago makes a lot of sense too with the temporary headstones, um, for no other reason than decency.
Oh, sure.
For no other reason than decency for someone to have a headstone, because people may have anybody to take care of the grave or to purchase something like that. I'm in full agreement in looking into doing some kind of a fund for that.
Well, that's what, no, that's what the deposit's for. They pay for it.
Before they ever get buried, they pay for a headstone.
And I want to say, there's a company in Shreveport that does them for like ninety-nine dollars a little small. So there may be something to look into.
Yeah.
The stake they put in there.
But that's.
That's what, isn't that what you're saying, that the temporary headstones or whatever, it's just that little stake they put in?
You provide the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, all we need to do is just call somebody to come put some in, you know, or as he says, call, get a contract with somebody to do that.
We probably could work out something with the Michael Sophie that we sell the monuments from, through the funeral home, that'd probably help with an issue like that. But the other thing, in all fairness, is to make sure we're straight on the record. They can have military headstones, but they have, they're supposed to be at the head, nothing at the foot. They can use granite, bronze, whatever they want with the military supplies, but they're all supposed to be on the head, but nothing at the.
And then they wouldn't have to do their own headstone, is that what you're saying?
That's correct, if they got them military.
Yeah.
But what's happened is, now they're getting the head, they put up a headstone and then they go for military marking, they're putting the military marking at the feet. There's lots of magic. I, I think that seven dollars is out of the peanut. And I, I think the easiest way without getting any heat on the council or anyone else, we're to the point now, changing that's going to be a real problem. The easiest way to change it is similar with Ray saying, but what I think these are, is go ahead and say, you can have military footstones put in the grave, but we're going to arm all the ground level, that way the more.
That's, yeah, yes.
They still get what they want, but the other thing is, and I think it's another way to generate some money, and I've talked to Ray about this. We let everybody, including family members, go ahead and put down grave markers to help themselves, that's when they're all out of line. We need to.
Melissa's doing that now.
She's marking the graves, I'm helping the markers herself.
Oh, yeah.
And Melissa.
Candy.
Candy marks your graves. They're doing a great job, by the way. They're doing it perfect. I roll in there, I know what's going on. But what I'm saying is. Two knee, they could start one back, but you could lower them all, where you can keep going across, and you won't damage them, and it's still, you know, it's not, we don't have to get off immediately.
Right, yeah, okay.
So Ray, two things, if we, if we change your motion to say, you know, the seven hundred and fifty dollars, and you also going to have to address this, uh, this six, six lot deal? That would go from sixteen fifty to forty-five hundred. It's on that second page.
Oh, 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 thank you.
Yeah, and then, and then also to address what he just mentioned. And here it mentions, uh, if we're going to have a military VA stone, put it in the grave at ground level only, add that to your motion.
He's the only one on there. That's the only thing on the agenda.
Gotcha, Roger, yeah, you're absolutely right, okay. So it stands.
Okay, you had, already made the motion. Did you sec, Doug second?
Did you second? It's been so long ago, I'll second.
I'm already.
Oh, he second.
We cut Bubba out again.
So, uh, is there any more discussion?
Uh, to be effective immediately, tomorrow?
Yeah, why not? May twentieth is an easy date to remember. All in favor? Opposed?
Is this city going to be open tonight to buy some? No, let's just.
You betcha, you want ten or twenty. Abstain, okay, it was unanimous. Discuss, consider and/or approve the temporary display of the recently restored eighteen seventy-two cloth Oakwood Cemetery map at the Jefferson Historical Museum.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'll let you have it second, Paul.
Okay, Hollis made the motion, Paul second, any discussion? That, no, thing being said, all in favor? Opposed, abstain, it was unanimous. Discuss, consider and/or approve drawing up an ordinance making it unlawful to feed animals on public property. And this was tabled from March the eighteenth.
I have a discussion.
Okay, well, let's have a motion.
Okay.
Well. Motion to, just go ahead and discuss it.
I was going to say, I'll make a motion.
Okay, April make a motion.
I. To deny, I would like to see. I think it's kind. We need to, before we put an ordinance in place, we need to talk a little bit more about it personally. Not saying that there's nothing needs to be done, but I just don't want to start giving out tickets, you know, for stuff like this, just right now. I think it needs to be tabled. There are people who want to be on this committee. We do a committee for almost everything else, so why not give this a try? So, that's just how I feel.
If, if the council agrees to a committee, I will be on it and, and for ninety days, the next, in August, by August, at the, uh, regular council meeting, we will have a recommendation. And then that way, Sunset, at that point, it won't be an ongoing committee, we'll meet by, and then come up with that.
I agree.
Deal. If I, that's agreeable with everybody, and then that will be the only thing I know of to get done, but I'll, I'll go as a city council member to be over that or set it up, you know, whatever.
I think that because we use FOG just so much for our animal control, I do think that we should, you know, ask their opinion, kind of let them work this out. Because they're doing so much of the legwork for us as a city, so.
Okay.
That's what I think we should do.
Paul, you have something to say.
I'm going to walk on, I'm going to walk very tight line right here.
I'm going to shake you off.
I don't believe tickets need to be issued and handed out, but I do believe there should be a committee on this. But at the same time, uh, I just know from personal experience with some problems with, uh, some cats. Uh, they've cost me thousands and thousands of dollars, because I have a neighbor that, uh, I've tried to explain to her as nice as I can. I've tried to tell her that, you know, in the state of Texas, when you feed an animal, uh, like that, you become the owner of that animal. And you're responsible for most spade, neutering and everything else that goes with it. Uh, I confirmed that with a judge and a police chief, um, several years ago. And I think people need to be under the understanding when they take in animals, and there's nothing wrong with that, I mean, all animals have a right to live. I agree with that. But people need to be under the understanding that if you do this, if you feed an animal, you, it's your responsibility to take care of that animal. You know, somebody's going to probably argue, well, what if they don't want to do that, but they just want to feed the animal? Well, these animals start out as two or three, and I've seen as many as ten in the recent years, and they're interbreeding and causing lots of problems. And it's cost me personally a lot of money, and there is a problem. I mean, there, there absolutely is a problem, and we need to find a fix for it. And I'm not saying that an ordinance to, to write tickets is the answer, but there does need to be an answer to it. And I just, I don't have that answer. I'm not going to sit here and play like I do, because I don't. But it needs, it needs to be looked at, um, very hard. I've, I've been in local restaurants where I'm trying to eat and on a patio and cats come out and standing right over you on beams. You know, I, I'm sorry, I don't, I, I don't appreciate that, because I'm not paying good money and, um, and that's just, uh, and they're, they're feral cats. They're wild cats that, you know, different homeowners and businesses take care of and feed and what have you. Um, so I don't have an answer, but, um, this is something that needs to be worked out and looked at and figured out. And that's really kind of all I got to say about that.
And I agree, I, that, uh, should be a, a committee to look at it, we, there is a problem. I, I know that I have a lot of people that come in my shop that, that, uh, you know, they ask, why does your town smell like cat pee? And, uh, I know that the, uh, the pigeons on Lafayette Street, uh, if you leave your car parked there for thirty minutes, you're going to come back and it's going to be white with, with bird poop. And, uh, the sidewalk is covered with poop. I know that, that kid goes. Off from time to time, and I appreciate her doing that. As many pigeons as there are there and everything. You know, we, we need to come up with something to, uh, because it, like, like they said, this is a tourist town. And, uh, not all the tourists are just real in love with, uh, with animals and everything. And I know I've been accused of not caring about animals. Well, that's, that's totally untrue. Uh, I, I do care about animals. Uh, but, uh, you know, we, we need to come up with something.
Well, I think these committees, that if you're going to put a committee together, I agree with almost everybody that, that spoke today about their heart-to-heart feeling for, for animals. But not a one of them mentioned, and I think it needs to make sure that it's talked about. Um, I, I did some research and there's thousands upon thousands of these ordinances throughout Texas, and all of them have the same wording in it. Is no city has a problem with you feeding any animal you want to feed on your private property. It's all, what's not mentioned is on public property. Feeding of the animals, not. But doing it on a property you control and not, and not somebody else's property, and the city is somebody else's property. Uh, so I think that just needs to be looked into. I mean, I, my wife is here, we feed a ton of stuff. And when I say stuff, we got cats, raccoons, possums, you name it, uh, but it's on our property, and it's nobody's business what we feed. Uh, but, uh, if I went and did it in front of your house on the public street, you have the right to complain what I'm doing in front of your house on, on a city street. And, and I think that's the, that's the focus, is where can we take care of this and take care of it in an orderly fashion, so everybody wins and no one gets fined.
And I think that, that ordinance would need to be written up very carefully, uh, because I don't think anybody would have a, a problem with a, uh, a kid throwing a french fry to a, a pigeon. You know, when they're walking down the street, or someone, uh, uh, giving their, their dog a little bite to eat, uh, when they're, they're visiting and everything. As long as it's not left out to just continue to pile up.
Should we change it to, uh, approve, uh.
Okay.
Drawing up a committee?
You have a motion on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right.
Yes.
And it was to, you want to do, would you like the motion?
It's what you said, yeah.
Yeah, so I made them, yeah, I guess so that would be, so I made a motion to deny, I withdraw my motion, and, oh, Lord, that's kind of confusing on this one. So, yeah, no, because I, I'm going to deny this one on what it is right here. I'm, I'm denying this one. I made a motion to deny this, the way it is.
Yeah, okay.
Make an amendment to change it to a committee?
And then I want to make an amendment to change it to, uh, city property.
Okay, she has made a motion to deny this motion on end, but to amend it instead to, to form a committee to look into or solve, resolve the problems of feeding the animals on public property.
That's it, sounds good.
I'll second.
Ray seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, so the discussion, Bubba, since you have decided to step up for the city, we really appreciate that. Um, are you going to contact who you, okay.
Are you going to pick your own committee?
Huh?
Are you going to just pick your own committee?
I'll let everybody know what it is and, you know.
I mean, I'm just asking.
I don't know exactly how to do it. I mean, it's one of those deals that I'll be the mediator of it or whatever, you know, I don't really know what.
Gather up everybody and discuss it, kind of like we do.
Discuss it, then we can kind of see how we inform a committee or something like that. I mean, because I don't know, are we going to have to, uh, post it and everything like that? I mean, we won't, all we're going to be making is a recommendation, we're not going to be.
Yeah, no, and we pass ordinances without posting them.
It's more of a blue ribbon, ribbon panel, blue ribbon, that's it.
Yeah, and here's the thing, reach out, because there's a lot in the community.
So is there anybody in the audience now that would like to be on the committee?
Well, I'm going to contact FOG.
Okay.
I see y'all.
All that's in favor, never mind, we don't care who's, April, you're out of order, don't do that, okay, so now.
I'm not out of order, we, we're pretty happy.
All in favor? Hey, please be quiet now. All in favor of the motion April made, who seconded?
I did.
Ray did. Opposed, Doug's opposed, abstain. Okay, so it's five to one.
And, and I oppose because of the verbiage was again added. And I oppose because of the verbiage was again added, that the committee is to view fixing this for public property, I still don't think we should.
It shouldn't be, there shouldn't be anything, yeah, I know what you're saying.
There should be a fix to this, and a committee would be a good source, but the way the motion was read, was a motion to fix this for usage of feeding animals on public property.
It's either you're going to feed them on there, or you're not going to feed them, it's pretty simple.
We'll give you a recommendation in ninety days.
Okay.
Or less.
What's been, this, passed.
Yeah, it passed, okay. Discuss, consider, and/or approve setting requirements for a committee member to be appointed to a city board. I had asked for this to be put on, I would like to see that some, there's some requirements to being on one of these committees, like you should live in town, and maybe your interest.
You mean for like the planning and zoning and?
All of our committees, yeah.
Well, JEDCO has already rectified.
Yes, okay, but, but I think we just need to, for going down the road, we'll have some guidelines for everybody to look at, for them to be interested enough to have at least registered to vote, if they pay their property taxes, if they owe, you know, back taxes or anything.
No, I disagree with that.
Do what?
I disagree with a person's property tax, like, I feel like, when you're going into just saying property tax, I'm going to say, I'm going to use myself, for example, I'm not behind on property taxes, they're all caught up, but.
That, I think that raises some legal issues.
Well, and it could, but that was just, I'm just throwing out what, there should be something other than them just appointing anybody and everybody, they should have to at least be living this, I would, well.
Behind on their property taxes, somebody could lose their job, anything could happen, that still doesn't mean that they're not a good citizen, just, I think saying property tax is like a deed.
Well, I don't think you can, I, that's why I say it's legally, I don't think you could do that.
Mrs. Mayor, I think the more important item is, is, an application would show that, we need their contact information, and basically, so just a simple application, but no qualifying questions like that because of legal issues, but the more important thing is, the person needs to want to be on the committee and serve on the committee. We have some committee members right now that were drafted, they didn't have any idea they were going to be put on there, they didn't have any idea their name was going to come up, and that, that's irresponsible.
Oh, yeah, well, I can imagine that you'd appoint somebody you hadn't talked.
We're appointing on the next meeting, next month, is that correct?
Yes, next month, we're going to be appointing, yeah. Well, that was just thrown out there, so you can let it die for lack of a motion.
Or maybe put it on the two.
Or table it.
I was thinking maybe come up with, like Doug was touching on some form of application and a vetting process, was touching on some form of application and a vetting process, you know, get people that want to do it, and, yeah.
And let me say, while all of you people are sitting out here, go run for office.
Come on down.
I mean, last month, it came up, two people on this board didn't even have opponents, so if you really want to help direct our city, come and give your time. Okay, so we're just going to leave that.
I would make a motion that we table this over here.
Okay.
And work on coming up with a reasonable set of requirements.
Okay, we have a motion to table by Hollis.
I second.
Doug seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain, I think it's unanimous. Okay, here we have our council initiatives update. The fire station in City Hall, Bubba, and we need to talk, HUD has something.
HUD, okay.
That.
We got some contact information for them, I don't know how to do it.
It's, well, it's just, it's, I, it's just online, is all I've seen, now, I talked to a guy from Department of Agriculture, USDA, and they have, he said right now, the only grants coming through, most of them are given to the legislature, and not any, but they have low interest loans that we might qualify for. So, but that was on City Hall. This HUD thing, they were saying that they would, they build fire stations, and they had this whole list of timetables and things, I think we probably missed it this year, I'm not sure why we've not ever done this.
I've never heard that HUD had a deal, I knew USDA was something Huckabee was working on.
I was a fireman for thirty years in Shreveport, and I know a little bit about, I don't know of any HUD deal, I've never heard of that, but it's usually because the city always passed a bond issue or a tax to pay for it. I do want to say this real quick, just from what previous meetings, if the estimated cost of that fire station is still what I last heard it was, high threes, close to four hundred, I would advise the city to jump all over that as quickly as possible, that is, you will not find a better deal.
I, 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 I don't think we can get it. Yeah, there's issues over there.
And I know they went to JEDCO the other night, I was sitting on part of that.
Exactly, yeah, I think if, in fact, it could be done for four hundred, everybody would have jumped on it, but there's, there's some issues.
Questions about that, I got.
Yeah, it's just how we're going to do it is, and what I was going to be involved in it, I mean, you know, my, my big thing is the kitchen and bedroom.
I know there was a question like, and I cleared this up, too, I was just sitting in meeting before I took counsel, but there was a question like about washer and dryer. Well, IFF, International Association of Firefighters, they highly recommend, they've done this for years, that all fire stations have washers and dryers in them, because they don't want you taking your, whether you wear a uniform, or your regular clothes, or your barbecue gear, they want it washed in the fire station and not taken home and carcinogens that come from the fire spread in your own home.
And wives don't want them taking them home, I've talked to one or two.
Well, they've got about a ten thousand dollar washer over here, I mean, we've already got the washer.
Okay.
Or washer, I don't think they've got a dryer, I think they, they hang dry them, I think.
I was just picking up on conversation, I picked up on previous meetings.
But, you know, we get to the weeds too much, on what's there and what's not, I mean, once you get the shell building, you know, the fire department can tell you what they need, but it's the overall shell size, because that other stuff, how you divide it up, is not really much of a cost.
Right.
It's doing the infrastructure, the slab and everything.
Well.
We're just trying to find extra money out there, some free money somewhere that could help us.
Well, I think there is, and I'll visit with you.
Everybody's been telling me there's money out there, I've been looking for it for five years, haven't found it, so.
Well, it's there, and let's, we won't take the time here, but let's, let's sit down and discuss it, but I think there's some additional monies that is there.
Okay.
Ray, you were the one that was going to, you wanted to just cemetery needs.
I think we already covered on that, but, yeah, I talked to Melissa and.
Okay, anybody got anything else on here that they want to talk about?
The stop at street signs, I know there's been ongoing deal for a long time, just listening to counsel online and being here, have those street signs been put up yet? The stop signs, the ones that were missing, has that been?
No, Melissa made a comment the other day in the meeting, I was with her, that, that, those are all ready, but the team that puts those on have been busy with other projects right now, that's been high priority, and they have them ready to go, but they just haven't been able to get manpower to get them done.
My biggest concern is not that there's a stop sign there or whatever, but if, and I'm no lawyer, but if someone's in an accident because the city didn't put a stop sign up somewhere.
It's not going to be nice.
It's not going to be nice, and the city will be sued, and that's why I think it should be a high priority item, and it doesn't sound like it's something that's going to take a whole long. It's not like we're building a building or something.
The majority of signs are street names.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and coming off of fifty-nine, the Jefferson Street there.
Was it, there's some stop signs missing?
It's gone, oh, that's right, it disappeared.
There's no sign there.
In color and missing, does anybody know the cost of these, you see in other communities, the flashing stop sign that has the solar light?
Yeah, they're, a regular stop sign, I think just a blank stop sign is like six, seven hundred dollars.
Really?
Are you serious?
I'm very serious, signage is just astronomical.
I'm always shocked about this stuff.
So, yeah, yeah.
I just think we should make it a party to at least get the stop signs up, any yield signs, anything, because the city's going to, they're asking for a lawsuit if someone's in an accident, and because there was no sign there, and somebody gets hurt.
I think Melissa has a list of which ones they can send to hit up.
I know that I gave a list of the ones that were needed in my ward, and we have all the signs put up, the stop signs and yield signs and everything that we needed, there are still a bunch that are faded, that need to be replaced, or new skin put on them or whatever, and that has not been done, and we also have a bunch of just the street signs, that, that, nothing's been done there yet, but.
There's lots of things.
No, I know, I wasn't so much concerned about the street signs.
I know, just, oh, my neighbor at Main and Benner's the other day, David come over and he goes, well, that stop sign down there, Jimmy wanted oven, fell over.
Fell over.
Well, okay.
And what do you do about a faded sign, do they repaint them, or?
They have a, they could stick on there.
I got you.
At least that's what they were doing at one time, okay, so, do I hear it, Bubba?
Oh, one last thing, I want you to add me to number thirteen with April.
Add him to thirteen.
Thirteen, what is it, what is it?
That's the welcome signs?
And I've got a lot of information, well, I had sent it to April about with the state, because you have to get, talk to the highway department, and she sent me all that information, I'll go back through and see if I can find where it is and send it to you.
Motion to adjourn.